How are you?
Thank you.
All right, Mike, you're good.
It's like way too easy, Arocha, way too easy. Good stuff.
Try to make it easy.
Hi, Mike.
How are you?
I'm glad.
Good, good. I'll get you that paperwork, by the way. I'll drop it off at the, at that drop box you have.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You bet.
Better than I should be. Okay, you got it coming this morning?
Yeah, I had to swear at you.
Again?
I don't do that a lot.
Get away.
Oh, I get the, I get the phone back. Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I, I left at home. I forgot. I didn't, I didn't get a chance to go home today, so. I could go wrong, but I pretty much did go wrong. Let's see what else can go wrong. Hopefully, nothing now.
Don't jinx us, Mark.
Yeah. Hopefully, it all, it's all happened already.
Yeah.
It'll all happen already. It's all over.
Mike O'Hern, are you calling in?
No, Mike's in the background.
Right here. Working.
You're live.
I don't know who called in.
Hi, Kate?
Yep. Joanne?
Hi, this is, yeah, this is Joanne. I'm calling in by phone, but is there a link where I can video in? I mean, is there a Zoom link?
Yes, so there's a couple ways to get it, and probably the easiest at this point is go to the website,
Okay, got it.
Okay, go to events and sign the homepage in the middle. Click on the town council.
Okay, let's see. All right, I'll figure it out. Yep, got it. Okay.
Okay, so under, when you go to, under description, it has the agenda. Click on the agenda.
Oh, okay, that's how I can get it. All right.
Yep, and then click on join meetings.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we ready, Kate?
Yes.
Okay, we'll call this council meeting to order. Stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilor.
Here.
Councilor Luddy.
Here.
Councilor Panas.
Here.
Councilor Russell.
Here.
Councilor Navarro.
Here.
Councilor B.
Here.
There you have it for him.
Thank you. Okay, so we have our audience of citizens. If you have anyone that has anything to...
I'm gonna unmute everybody.
Talk to us now's the time.
Hello?
Hello?
Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hi, my name's Peter Zerbozo. I reside at 158 Elwood. I just wanted to make a comment pertaining to the conduct of the way the town is carrying out meetings in regards to communication. I want to thank the town and continue to encourage the town and the town council to carry out meetings allowing for telephonic or internet communication. I've witnessed other towns that relegate citizens to only written comment through the use of other internet platforms such as Microsoft Teams, and I feel that's very demeaning and a disservice to the citizens of the town or community that reside in it. So I'm very appreciative that you continue to allow people to actually have a verbal comment in meetings and not just in the light of COVID, but also as technology continues to advance, I hope that the town will continue to consider the importance of verbal comment.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, thank you very much for your comments. I want you to appreciate it. We always want to hear from our residents as often as possible on any given issue, so thanks for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience of citizens? Once? Twice? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the audience of citizens and move on to our meeting agenda, which we have our consent agenda. We have four items, accept donations for the DARE account, some donations for the Harlem Pipe Memorial Library, approval of Connecticut Sports Management itself, Huda and Beverages, the Nutmeg Games in July at Sage Park, and approve waiving estimated fee usage fields for the Nutmeg Games from July 15th through July 15th. Yep, so there we go. Back to somewhat normal by then. Okay, so we have a consent agenda. We afford items, four items. If we don't have any other questions or discussion, we're gonna take a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, Luddy here, I will motion to accept the four items on the consent agenda.
Uh, second?
I second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Here we none? All is in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so moving. Thank you. On to our new business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. So the first item on the agenda is an update from Mr. Petrofsky, working on the senior housing project and the application process. I'll be happy to hear from Joe and Eddie. So, both yours.
Okay, thank you very much. Hello, everyone.
Hey, Joe.
We've had a couple, three or four busy months on this front, and there's a lot of moving targets. Unfortunately, I wish I could tell you that, you know, everything's secured, but with the state being in the financial situation is right now, they are, you know, slowing things down to say, to say the least. We figured out through some work with the City of Maryland Housing Authority, we figured out an ability to get at least 10 Section 8 project vouchers for the Knights of Columbus. That would allow us to target the 30% and lower median income in the area. And will also allow us to get funds from the National Housing Trust Fund because of that project voucher. So that's roughly $4 million to the project, which basically closes our gap. As you know, I approached the town way back when about bonding that money, but through these Section 8 project vouchers, we're able to obtain money from National Housing Trust Fund. And that money could increase if we can get some more Section 8 project vouchers from the City of Maryland. We're currently in discussions with them about going in that direction. We're looking currently at a 4% tax credit. The 9% tax credit is not gonna work on this project as much as we'd like it to. The Department of Housing is opposed to age-restricted housing at the 9% level. So 4% is what we're gonna have to look at. Combined with CHFA mortgage of $3 million, Department of Housing subsidy of $5 million, Connecticut Development Block grant, or Community Development Block grant of $1.5 million, plus the National Housing Trust Fund, that gets us to $18 million. We had a discussion yesterday with the Department of Housing at a Zoom meeting. I think it was Microsoft Teams, but regardless, it was a virtual meeting with Miguel Rivera of Department of Housing. It was a positive meeting, but again, he cautioned us that they're looking basically at March of 2021 before they make any awards and monies at this point in time. They had a meeting today to set up the bond commission meeting in December. They're gonna get some money out of the governor's office in December. I encouraged him to get us on that bond commission agenda. I don't know what happened with that meeting today. He did not respond back to my calls. So right now, we're looking at March before we get an answer from Department of Housing with respect to their $5 million or $5 million contribution. In terms of the 4% tax credit, we are in the process of making that application. We are probably 45 to 50 days out from making that application. We are in discussions with CHFA at this point in time to get that set up. We filed the developer's engagement profile with the Department of Housing, so that has been done. And that is where we stand at this point in time. Any questions?
So that's a change from what we, right? We're looking at Joe or no?
Say again?
Was that a change from what we were looking at?
What do you mean by a change? In terms of a timeframe or in terms of a...
Timeframe, first of all, right? But I thought stuff was due by November?
Yes, that was a 9% tax credit. We're not gonna, we're not gonna be competitive at the 9% level. And the Department of Housing has encouraged us to go with the 4%, which is what we're doing.
All right, and with the 4%, will we be able to make this work, so with some of these additional contributions?
Yes, so basically with the 4%, we had a deficit or a gap between the cost of the project and the amount of money financed. We had some discussions, like you said, with the City of Maryland. So the way the Section 8 project vouchers work, similar to the Section 8 tenant vouchers, in that they allow the Department of Housing to pay the difference between what the tenant can afford and what the market rate of the rent is. In this case, the project voucher stays with the apartment, whereas a normal tenant voucher moves with the tenant. So the City of Maryland in the state of Connecticut is one of the agencies that administers Section 8 vouchers. So we had a discussion with them about getting an allocation of project vouchers. So we were, we were able to get a commitment for 10 project vouchers from the Maryland Housing Authority. That 10 housing vouchers allows us then to access money from the National Housing Trust Fund, which basically makes up the gap that we had because we couldn't go with the 9% tax credit.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah, any other question?
Just wondering, how does the section 8 housing?
Say again?
Will that obligate a certain tenant to let change our market?
All right, I'm not clear, but I think that the question had to do with Section 8 and marketing the property. So right now, the way the property is proposed, it's affordable, but it's gonna be basically 50% of median income, 60% of median income, and 80% of median income. And that will allow us to, you know, charge less than market rate rents, but it would be very close to market, which we've had some feedback from the seniors that that would not be affordable to them. What we're looking at doing is through the project vouchers is charging the affordability, similar to what Marger Moore charges. So basically, if you, if 30% of your median income is the calculation, is how much rent you can afford. Now, I'll give you an example. Let's just say it's $1,200 for that apartment. If you could only pay $300, then you pay the $300, the Section 8 project voucher will make up the difference between the 300 and the 1,200. And that, again, that stays with that apartment. So the tenant secures that location. So we'll be able to target people that don't have the means to pay a market rate or, you know, subsidized rate in the state of Connecticut for rents. They'll be able to use the Section 8 monies to live in this complex. And right now, we have 10 Section 8 project vouchers, so that would apply to 10 of the apartments.
My question is, can we give up the ability to choose our own tenants? We still...
We don't, we don't have the ability to choose our own tenants now. Basically, the way the system works is when we open the waiting list, anybody can make an application to be a tenant. It's not limited to the town of Berlin. Through fair housing law, it has to be open to anybody in the United States, basically.
And it still can't be controlled by age?
I was just gonna say age restrictions. Are there any age restrictions?
No, age restrictions, yes. On this complex, an age restriction would be in place. So it'd be, you know, if it's elderly, 65 and over. If it's senior, it'd be 55 and over.
Well, it's at least 55 and over.
Correct. Nobody under the age of 55 would be able to reside there.
We can't do anything in terms of Berlin residents versus Marion versus Britain versus anywhere?
No. We could only differentiate based on income and credit, you know, background checks, things like that. But if they are a resident of the United States, they can come in, and that exists now. When we open up the waiting list for Percival Heights or Marjorie Moore, anybody can apply to live there. You do not have to be a resident of the town of Berlin.
Joe, what's your opinion?
Yes.
What are you planning to get from the 4% tax credit amount?
4% tax credit amount is gonna be about $4.6 million, give or take.
So 4.6 from that.
Yep.
From Section 8, $3 million from CHFA?
The Section 8 project vouchers, we're not get, we're gonna get rent monies from that. It's not like a dollar amount. So the 4% tax credit is 4.6. The CHFA mortgage will apply to CHFA mortgage is $3.1 million. There's gonna be a deep-worth subsidy of $5 million, a Community Development Block grant of $1.5 million. And then we have the National Housing Fund would be about $2.7 million.
So for all of these various components, they all have different timeframes, right? For example, the CDPG grant, we have to apply for that, right?
That's correct, yes.
So what's the timeframe for that?
It'll be March.
I'm sorry, is there some voice in the background?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, Joe. Trying to map out the time.
The CDPG right now would be March.
March of 2021.
21, 2021. And the same with the DOH subsidy would be March.
Okay, and the CHFA?
CHFA and the 4% tax credit, we could do, you know, the process of doing the 4% now. Those are as of right, so we make the application, we'll get funded. The National Housing Tax Fund, again, we'd have to make an application for that. There is no, like, timeframe where you have a deadline and you'd have to file by a certain date in order to get the money. It would be like a mortgage application, basically.
What's the timeframe for that, the National Housing Tax Fund?
I don't have, I don't have a timeframe in terms of response, but right now, I'm thinking it's, you know, probably 60 days.
60 days from the time we apply?
From the time we apply, that's correct.
And when do we plan to apply?
Now, we're in the process of getting all that set up. The first domino to fall is the 4% tax credit application. That's in the process of being done now.
And the 4% and the CHFA, what's the timeframe for that?
Again, that's, that's like a mortgage application, basically. We fill out a mortgage application with all the information regarding the project, we proform out financial statements, the rent rolls, things like that. Then we submit that to CHFA, and then they assign a loan officer to that, and we work to get that funded.
And the Section 8, again, when do we have confirmation or is it a done deal? Or the voucher?
I'm hoping with the next month, we'll have everything in terms of Section 8 nailed down.
And up December?
Oh, yeah, December, maybe January with the holidays and stuff. But yeah, I'm hoping to have commitment in January for the 4%, oh, excuse me, for the Section 8.
So with all this, all this funding, we have enough for the project, is what you're saying?
We have enough for the project.
By...
Some of these numbers changed. For example, at yesterday's meeting with housing, they're looking to increase the amount of money that's going through the Community Development Block Grant from $1.5 million to $4 million. So if they, you know, if we can get more money out of that bucket, we will, and we'll decrease the amount of the DOH subsidy.
All right, Mike, we appreciate the update, and obviously, you know, I know you've been working hard on this for a long time, the town itself, everyone, so yeah, keep it up. It seems like, from what you've said now, the funding is...
We have a path.
In our grasp, huh?
We have a path forward, so, you know, especially with the Section 8 project vouchers really help us out on that. So, you know, we have a path forward now with those project vouchers in the mix.
Oh, good. Well, that's good. So, so any shortfall, you write the check, right, Joe?
I'm hoping, I'm hoping, by March at least. So, and like you said, if we can, if we can get these all funded, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, maybe by the summer, we'll be able to break ground. You know, that's kind of a long shot, but that's what my hope is now. Especially if March is the timeframe they're looking at, so, you know, we'll see. Like you said, the state, the state isn't a financial pickle. I think that's why the Community Development Block Grants are being upped, because that's basically federal money that they're getting from the feds and distributing out through their block grant system, so, you know. We'll see how it goes.
Good, well, yeah, that's, that's better news than I think we've heard in a long time.
Correct.
Get the funding, so yeah, it's great.
Correct. So my developer team will continue working on this, and I'll keep you updated as to our progress.
All right, appreciate it, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Let me know, let the town know if it can help you any day.
No, we will. We'll be knocking on your door, Arocha. We have, there's, in terms of the mortgage application, we're gonna need letters of support and things like that. So that's for the 4% tax credit, so we'll be, we'll definitely be in touch.
Excellent, thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Have a happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
You too.
Take care.
Is it item number two?
Number two.
Want to remove this?
Remove it.
So it's been taken care of, other than the on-call contract, so there's going to be this route?
Okay.
So the item number three is Architectural Engineering Design and Construction Administration of Percival Soccer Field. And Jim and Steve Wood wants to take this, ten?
Yep, so this is the second project we plan to do with the Athletic Field Improvement Bond that you guys approved last year. Stage one was the first. So we went out to bid for Architect, Engineering, Design, and Construction Administration Services to see the whole project through for the reconstruction of Percival. We had seven bids received. Myself, Steve Wood, Mike O'Hern, and Mike O'Hern and Jim Horrible did interviews with four of the firms, and at the end of the interviews, it was a unanimous choice to go with WMC. They were the lowest bidder. They're more than qualified. We checked their references, and we got glowing reviews of them. And they even have experience working with Mike and Jim on some other projects out of public work, so it's kind of a win-win situation for everyone, we think.
Okay, that's great. Moving forward with this. Good. Questions for Jim?
When do they anticipate starting that work?
We would work with the firm to set up, to hire the construction company that would do the project, and we're looking to probably start it sometime in June, maybe even May.
What kind of timeframe do you look at for construction? Do they have a good one yet?
I mean, we haven't met with them yet, obviously, because we haven't officially hired them yet, but, I mean, Steve and I have talked about it, and the goal is to have by mid-August, everything opened up. We have to basically make sure we get the sod down with enough time for it to, you know, plan to take. But we hope to, I mean, the whole thing is, we don't want to lose that field for Berlin Youth Soccer in the fall. We're okay losing it in the spring. We'll talk to Berlin Youth Soccer and everything and make sure they still have enough fields, but the plan is mid-August to late August to get it back open and ready to play.
And our goal is to definitely try to get the sod down before we get into the wicked hot middle of July to the middle of August, and because once we get to the end of August, the temperatures are gonna start to drop off. So if we could have the sod laid somewhere around June 7th to June 14th, would give us ample time for that to cure and be good to go for the spring, fall soccer season for McGee &amp; Youth Soccer.
Great, yeah, Peter.
Awesome. Steve, why would you have you here? And Jim, I was up the field today, and I noticed the light stanchion is still down. Do we have any idea of when they're gonna correct that, or since there probably won't be any football, is that on the back burner till the summer?
No, there was a lot of moving parts that had to go into her. We waited quite some time for RD Design to come back with the structural report. If all four poles were safe, to continue to have them erected at Schlesfield. All of the reports came back good. Earth Contractors was out there last week, and I believe they were back out there today. They're gonna get ready to start to cut off the bolts. They're gonna shift the light 22 and a half degrees, re-core the bolts, use some two-part epoxy and put the studs in. So we're very hopeful and optimistic. By January 1st of 2021, the light pole will be back up, operational and functional. They're going to grout the other four light poles, so everything should be awesome and ready to go for the spring sports season.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions for Steve or Jim? All right, thank you. So we'll go ahead and take a motion on this?
Okay, Mr. Mayor. That's Luddy here. I move to award RFP 2021-04, authorized the town manager enter into a contract with Langel, McDonald, Estelo for the mountain to exceed $29,500 for the reconstruction of Percival Soccer.
Second on that?
I second.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from the council? Here we none? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Steve and Jim.
Thank you, guys. Have a good holiday.
You too.
Thanks.
Number four is a wave the bidding process for United Sites Northeast Inc., fiscal year 2021. Said they'll be cleaning and maintenance of 13 porta-potties around the town of Berlin.
Steve?
Yeah, we've been using United Site Services for the last several years. They've given us the best price. Went out to bid twice last year, once in January, and then again in March, hoping that the prices would change with the way COVID has been reacting. CDC came out with new guidelines, and their only guidelines with the porta-potties were to have increased, more increased frequent cleanings, which went from one cleaning a week to two cleanings a week, which really drove up the croc... week to two cleanings a week, which really drove up the cost from being a hu- forty-four dollars a month per unit to a hundred and twenty-two dollars per unit. We, during the bid, we went out and checked with other companies and United Site Services came back the cheapest. Our game plan is, is once the vaccine and everything is out and they lower back the restrictions of what the cleanings are going to be required for these units, that we'll go back out to bid and hopefully get a better price. Most of these units are at the parks, the baseball fields, softball fields, basketball courts, tennis courts, um, and other facilities throughout town.
All right, thanks, Steve. Any uh, questions for Steve? Are we now gonna take a motion on this?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Luddy here, I move to waive the town's bidding procedures, approve issuing a purchase order in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. United Sites Northeast Inc. for weekly cleaning at the ends of thirteen porta-potties, this is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you, second on that?
I second.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
The vote? Motion carries, thank you. Thanks, Steve.
Thanks.
Number five, the purchase of rack body truck while the parks and grounds department? You taking this team or is it Jim? Something's on the line.
I believe I am.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
Um, the addition of vehicle is gonna be extremely helpful for carrying bobcat attachments, mowers, groomers and other grounds department equipment to various occasions throughout town. It's gonna really become beneficial with the transporting of sod, fertilizer, drying agents for ball fields, salt, concrete, mulch and flowers. It's going to be kind of a one, one truck operation where you have to put everything on it, go to the job site, be able to work out of the truck and get everything done without having to make multiple trips, especially with the mulch and the flowers with using a conventional dump truck.
Any questions, comments from the council? Hearing none, go ahead and take a motion?
Okay, it's Luddy here, I move to utilize Task Four DAS contract for nineteen PS X zero one six one and approve issuing a purchase order in the amount, I'd exceed fifty thousand dollars to task four Birlin Connecticut, rack body truck account for the purchase of a rack body truck.
Wow. Thank you. Uh, second on that?
I second.
Charlie, uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
The opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Uh, Steve again and yeah, we're.
Thank you, have a happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Oh, yeah, you too, we're happy to give you guys the tools you need to do your job, so.
Steve's on the medication, he joined us.
Thanks, Steve.
Drop to us, thank you. All right, uh, thank you, and agenda item number six is a purchase of lion personal protective equipment, EPEs, CNS Specialty. See you on the line.
Hello, everybody.
Hey, Jen.
Hi.
How you doing? How you doing? So, this is our yearly purchase of protective clothing for the firefighters. Um, protective clothing is actually the uh, the lion protective clothing is actually the pants, the coat, the gloves and the hood that they wear when they go into a, um, in, into an actual fire. And every year we try to replace a certain amount of protective clothing so that we can stay within the NFPA requirements of uh, no protective clothing if it be over ten years old. And what we do is we rotate it through, the new, the new equipment goes to the heavier used guys, um, the guys that are more active with that equipment being handed down to the guys that are in training and in school waiting to be certified.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Um, any questions? Now, we'll go and take a motion on this?
Okay, Councilor Luddy here, I move to approve the purchase of lion fire department protective clothing from CNS Specialty in amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars utilizing the NTP gov national, national purchase partners contract number PS one zero, one six zero zero eight.
Thank you. All right, there are no further comments or questions? Go ahead and uh, vote on this motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, again with this, like we wanna keep our public works with the right equipment, we wanna keep our volunteer firemen and all they do for us and the town safe, so glad to do that.
Thank you.
Item number seven is to move to waive the town's purchasing requirement and purchase from hardware truck equipment, necessary materials, labor, outfit that previously purchased, forfeit to cab chassis with back the, the body, snowplow, liftgate, warning light system from hardware truck equipment. Jim?
Okay, so with all good-laid plans, something always goes awry. Um, this is a replacement truck for the truck that was damaged on Worthington Ridge that had an accident with the telephone pole. Unfortunately, when the truck was ordered, uh, we didn't know COVID was gonna hit, so COVID hit, Ford shut down their plants, um, to build ventilators, which put the truck behind schedule. The truck chassis just came in, um, recently, and the problem now is I was going to have my fabricator in shop put it together, which included installing the snowplow, installing the body on it, installing toolbox, putting the lights and everything else on it. Unfortunately, with the workload we have here now, I don't have the ability to do that, and also my fabricator is uh, on the injured list. So what I did was I went to, back to Task Four and found out who they utilize, and they actually utilize, um, Hartford truck equipment, much like the truck you just uh, awarded to Parks and Browns three items ago. So I went up to Parks and, uh, I went up to Hartford Truck, obtained estimates on everything I, that we would need to do. Um, they do have a state contract for the snow equipment, but only the snow equipment, not the body. The body equipment goes through Task Four, so I'm asking for a waiver of the town's purchasing so I can send this truck up there and have it built, hopefully have it back in uh, forty-five days maybe to get it done in a row for snow equipment.
Okay, um, another COVID problem, right, Jim? Always.
Uh, it's all, it's, it's always the little things.
Yes, that's for sure. Okay, any uh, questions for Jim? Hearing none, go ahead and take a motion?
Hey, Councilor Luddy here, I move to waive the town's purchasing requirements, approve the purchase of parts and labor, outfit one highway department can, the chassis, Hartford truck equipment, on mountain to exceed forty-two thousand dollars, this is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. Brendan, thank you, Charlie, uh, if there's no further comments, uh, put on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, have a good Thanksgiving.
All right, you too, Jim, thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, Jim.
Yeah.
Item number eight, it's a purchase of an equipment trailer for the highway department. You want that mic? Oh, okay.
Am I allowed to approach?
Yes. Get the full suit on, though, where's all the, you know, you gotta.
Stay behind me. Yeah, this is, um, basically, the highway department wants to replace its current eighteen-year-old trailer, which uh, is rated for nine tons. That's not, um, the payload capacity is less than a new excavator that we're uh, buying, and I think it's actually gonna show up next week, the excavator, so staff recommend that we purchase fifteen-ton rated trailer, that's with Jim Simons and Steve Carver Highway. Um, this um, trailer actually will have electric operated ramps, it has twenty-two-foot deck, it has a beaver tail ramp so that it, you know, the machine goes up smoothly, doesn't have any, you know, uh, really as it goes up, so it's safer for the crew. We got a quote from Tyler of just under twenty-four thousand dollars, and they apply a sourceable contract number of, listed by thirty-two hundred dollars. Um, we also, I didn't include this because it wasn't apples to apples, but back in two thousand and nineteen, we got a quote from Willie White Clark for a small trailer with shanter ramps, and that was like twenty-two thousand one thirty, so we're in the ballpark. Um, they all use the sourceable contract, so we're looking to get to the PO for twenty-four thousand dollars and get that trailer, uh, this new trailer to replace the old one, which has actually thirty-ton, uh, fifteen-ton uh, payload capacity, it's thirty thousand pounds, so it's a, it's a pretty nice unit, and it's uh, can also be used for transporting catch bases, sumps and tops and all sorts of stuff when it's not being used for transporting the excavator or uh, Woody's Bobcat, what it's called.
Any questions?
He's got a question, I don't expect it out. Why didn't you go electric brakes? This can only be pulled from air brakes.
Uh, actually, I think the trucks that can pull this are all electric, they're not air brakes. Jim, Jim, Jim Simons is still on the line, he can, we have three trucks that are rated, pull this trailer, are electric, not air, so they're compatible with this?
Our biggest, our big six-wheelers don't have air brakes?
No.
Uh, our big six-wheelers do have air brakes, the trailer adapter, we don't have a trailer, um, air brake trailer, we have electric trailer for it.
I was wondering why you didn't go to air on this bigger trailer.
Well, we would then, we would then have, endure extra costs to go and outfit the trucks so they could properly pull it. We'd have to put trolley brakes in, plumbet and, and glads and all that other stuff.
Those trucks aren't, most of the trucks I bought are equipped with that already, it's gotta put a glad in.
Right, but we, we did not have a need for that at that time, so we did not purchase trucks with glad hands and trolley brakes.
I understand, I just thought it was a standard option.
Yeah.
Stay with the electric.
Yeah, and there's no problem with the electric, the electric, if they're, if they're maintained properly, it'll be fine.
You don't pull out of highway, it's a nice trailer.
The uh, you, you gotta remember that, that this trailer is an in-town trailer, it's not an over-the-highway trailer, um, so the speeds will be lower on it, and those electric brakes will hold up just fine in there.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, any other questions? Hearing none, go ahead and take a motion?
Yeah, Councilor Luddy here, I move to waive the bidding process and approve issuing a purchase order in amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand dollars to Tyler Equipment for Birlin Connecticut, equipment account for the purchase of a equipment trailer for the highway department, as this is in the best interest of the town.
All right, thank you, Charlie. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Uh, so moved, thank you. Thanks, Mike. Jen, thank you.
Item number nine is a request for catch basin materials related to obey PDA projects.
Yep, this is, um, really this is just so we can order a, a last batch of catch basin tops and sumps for this season, we want to set up for the spring, so this contract is actually ending December thirty-first, but this approval will allow us to use the DAS contract through one last quarter, get the guys, uh, you know, stocked up with the parts we can use in the spring, with paving prep and footprinting. And it is a DAS contract which we, you know, we could, with United Concrete.
All right, any uh, any questions? Are you none, go ahead and take a motion?
Councilor Luddy here, I move to utilize the Connecticut DAS contract number seventeen S X zero zero nine, just the necessary concrete catch basin materials for United Concrete Product Deals, will, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you. Brendan, thank you, Charlie, uh, any other questions for Mike? Hearing none, we'll go on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Nice Thanksgiving, guys.
Happy Thanksgiving, Mike.
All right, so I, uh, that ends uh, that, uh, new business, so we've got some appointments against.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we have the weapons commissions, we have a spot data. Alter alternatives, alternate response, right? Okay, so we'll go ahead and open nominations for the wetlands.
The wetlands, I will nominate Mr. Steve Viall.
Thank you for that. Uh, any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the nominations for the spot, and we'll go ahead and, uh, all those in favor, Mr. Viall?
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right, welcome, Viall to our wetlands. And we have two for the, uh, Madabasset District, right? Okay, so we'll open the nominations.
Madabasset District, I will nominate. John Dunham?
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other nominations for this spot? Hearing none, I'll close these nominations, all those in favor, Mr. Dunham?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Moved, and another, one more, we have another spot, Madabasset, nomination, second spot. Thank you. Uh, any other nominations for this spot? Hearing none, close nominations, all those in favor, Mr. Fallon?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, congratulations to the three individuals.
Thank you.
Thanks for helping out the town. All right, so we are at our town manager's report, miraculously, quite quickly.
Yes, uh, just.
Christmas miracle, it's a Thanksgiving miracle.
It was good, uh, so a few updates, uh, shouldn't come as a surprise, uh, Thanksgiving, yeah, move all our boards and commissions within the council meeting remotely, virtually, I mean, um, we are the only town, I'm told by CCHD, that people are in, uh, worship. So, I mean, this is as a precautionary measure, uh, we had, uh, three weeks ago, our numbers in teens last week, forty-two, now it's over fifty-eight. The anticipation is after Thanksgiving, it'll walk even more, probably know the head of all the people in town, more, it's important to have someone of them that's a positive with the, the, this is, so thi- this is a precautionary measure and I would, uh, fast, uh, some of the other, TMZ and border families and others to follow the same, uh, after Thanksgiving until feel a little bit comfortable getting in person. So I think we can do it safely, we have the technology to do it, I'm also exploring Microsoft Team Software, another tool that, uh, we might be able to use, but I think we can safely conduct business and we'll be safe and effective, and, uh, keep everybody now calm a little bit when we get through this.
All right, so that, so we got the, we got one meeting in December?
Yes.
So we can reevaluate after the first of the year, see how, if you're gonna continue or not, when you find the additions in town and state?
Yep, um, just a heads up on this one, I had, uh, a call from one of our senior citizens to, um, open up the senior center for, um, meeting and, uh, it's like classes, uh, New Britain has done so, um, but, uh, none of our, um, senior centers in our district is a little rocky here. So I consulted with CCHD and they are really opposed to doing something like that, at least until after the holidays, it's very, things are forming, especially with senior and, um, and I, but I've offered, um, having conversations or asking Tina if it's social gathering can be facilitated, at least they won't admit, they're being from home, but maybe we can connect it a little bit truly so that they can have a conversation, do something like that, I'm not sure whether people are receptive to that, but we will offer that, um, but you might, any one of you might get approached by, uh, seniors, it's another whole, just one person, but I don't know one person who speaks for all seniors.
Yeah, I mean, again, I think, you know, through the holidays, you, you know, it's maybe more at risk, so wait, you know, wait till after the holidays, see what happens in January, you hear the vaccines are on the way and, you know, both at-risk people, our first responders and our seniors hopefully would be able to get some of these doses fairly soon in the new year, we hope, so, yeah, reevaluate in January, what happens. So, you know, reevaluate in January, what happens.
Tax payments are what we do too. So we will be sending that Scott reminded.
Oh, good.
To all residents and businesses through all taxes. They have already paid in four people here.
Okay.
And. Get the address by the seventh, eighth or tenth. And one of the things we noticed in July, you'd see several more lines outside the tax season because of COVID. Lot of people decided to go and pay online or mail it for safety reasons. Those who showed up had the option to drop it off because Berlin has not offered in the past a drop box for taxes. So we are installing a drop box. As you come in through the revenue collector's door, the very first door on the right-hand side. They have a safe box there where people can drop their taxes so that they don't say that at all. I am preparing for the worst-case scenario in case if there's a shutdown, we can still, I don't know about that. Still allow people to just come in and drop their taxes in the morning of coming inside. I got the impression last time from other folks, the present is surprised that they have more ways of, you know, paying their taxes. They would rather not come. But I'm sure there'll be a handful coming with passion saying, I still wanna come and pay personally. It's exceptions, but if we can, you know, accommodate these requests and keep people safe, especially at this time. And so be few people this time and they'll be dropping their taxes in the drop box. Went on this last time, we have been making a lot of improvements with the technology, with BPM. I'm pleased to say that the entire finance office, council bureau, payroll, et cetera, revenue collector, they had to, they can do. Have secured the insurance for private money post install. In the process of working with the building department, planning, public works, all to assist one of the applications from the site so that they can do, they have to, we have already started. There are two people or so who could take people to that. You don't run into a situation where you have to close the entire system of this other collector. One person is possible, just to get through this on the last. On our, some update, positive news. Thanksgiving, the holiday distribution, there were two hundred and thirty-seven families that, again, Jamie told me. Had fewer volunteers this year than by the times, you don't have a lot of volunteers. But they were able to, to manage their family for Thanksgiving and they'll be planning another event. Unless they're calling. Or this event, but, so great, that's really challenging. This community, you know, they're very generous and they've actually contributed a lot for us to get through this. Couple of updates, the Boulevard is almost done. Some priceless items, Main Street is done. The islands have to be completed and there's a brick here that needs to be completed. The section of Kinsum and Main Street that Bank of America is, uh, away. And after that, that's gonna be done as well. Probably recall the business of that, that's complete. Working on that, there's a lot of, on that project is coming. Berlin Street, Bridge, a few more items to be done by December. Of course, that striping of Kinsum Road, all that will be completed in the next week. So, also seeing the apartment in half, so I think that is next on the list to consider. So those are the project updates. Just Jeff's on the line here. We've been talking about very soon, they will be sending out, have it already, the financial disposal ethics policy.
Done.
So one of the things that Jeff and I had talked about, he actually suggested is that we could do like a thirty-minute video conference call to, you know, just highlight what, what, what this, the tax policy. And also the financial disposal form is what is expected then. Reminding people not to just do one or two, just like all the elected officials. And if you have to do it in a couple of days, we'll do it. And this way to get it out there and Jeff will be conducted by the Operation Council. Jeff's on the line, I mean, he's traveling to Washington, he's on his car. Hey Jeff?
Okay, thanks. Yeah, no, I mean, it's, you know, trying to keep the town moving forward as we have throughout the whole COVID crisis, I guess. So, you know, get through, it looks like hopefully the end is near with the, now, free companies have vaccines now, I think. More and more, right? So it's a lot of good news that's coming out, we assume, in the new year, so. Hopefully we can get beyond it in twenty twenty-one as quick as possible. But I want to keep everybody safe certainly through the holidays and we can evaluate what's going on in January. So, that's good. So, special committee reports, we did have a coordinance committee meeting. The only other agenda was the leash law. It's two parts of the leash law we're looking at. One part is in all the areas of town, we have drafted an ordinance that would mean that every dog owner walking their dog would have to be on a lead, you know, on actual leash. Except for, we're still looking for one carve-out for on-leash. And, you know, we know we've been dealing with this as a town for many, many years, certainly not just this council. Advice of Town and Park, which has created some issues over the years. So we came up in the ordinance committee with a different area perhaps over, so we're letting that sink into some of the people that attended the ordinance committee and, you know, get that out to the town, obviously. Pistol Creek. I think that's, is that Fairway, there was that whole, whole one across the, I don't know. Four or five, so it's across the road, it's the fairway by the handicap parking. It's at least seventy thousand square feet as it stands now. There's tree, tree lines on both sides, there's a walking path through it, there is a walking path around it. So, you know, things could be, if that is the ultimate decision. There could be signs posted, there could be fence, a little fence put up so people are aware if they do go into that area, there are dogs off the leash. And I think we talked about fencing the end somewhere further down the fairway to kind of contain people and dogs to some extent. So that's out there, we're gonna let that sink in, winter's coming, so people will get it. The good thing about that is that it supports town property and not controlled by any other entities. And we have the parking lot across the street, large parking lot, so solves many problems, perhaps. So we're just gonna let people take a look at it, think about it, and talk about it in the new year. Yeah.
The ordinance committee, I think you asked one of the, that's the scrap page of.
Of the Metta Advice of Town?
Yeah, well, two things, one, that, because it's a par five. If you go for the route all the way up the bridge.
Okay.
The initial part was seventy thousand, you mapped?
Yes.
Higher component, it's a hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Well, that was double. Oh, wow.
The Vicentini apartment, it was two thousand. So, so it's, you know, like seventy thousand, right? But still, a hundred and forty thousand is a lot of space for each three area.
It is.
So, I, there's still something to partner.
Yeah, right. Further, yeah, we can make it a little bit bigger, yeah. I mean, you know, again, we're trying to help everyone. I think, you know, it's, most towns, you know, California, Virginia, Stanford, around central Connecticut, most dog parks are fenced, small, very, very small areas, parking holes, something like that. So we're trying to provide something better for our, you know, dog walkers and dog aficionados, dog owners and all. Yeah, and keep it safe, obviously, you know. Any issues, it's been relatively safe, thank goodness. If we could find a little bit better rotation and hopefully keep everyone as happy as we can. I know we can't always please everyone, we try to do the best we can, but if we can do the most good for the most people and, you know, so just, you know, urge residents to take a look at that option. Could extend it even to add to the square footage and look a pretty safe area for the animals and for people that still would enjoy Pistol Creek and might alleviate some of the issues in Vicentini. Anyway, that's what we talked about, we'll continue with that discussion. So that's it, I don't, there was no more special committee, I think that was it?
I got one. This is for the calendar and the.
Oh, yes, the calendar, yes.
Little problem with the co-chair of the committee, I got the email myself. Calendar, but I had a great backup plan and Kate Wall was there for the rescue as usual. We're on the same wavelength, so she'll get this out to the email to the other council. And she probably had the, had the same problems I did around November, you got election on the second and we have springing ceremony a couple of weeks later. We have a council meeting at the end of November and skip December, or just that one in December. So, just some thoughts on that, you know, get it out in December.
Okay.
Nothing really changed.
Right. Okay. Thank you Brendan, as always, for your ride herd on that big committee that you have, it's difficult to control. The committee of one perhaps is the best committee, is what you say, you know, it's, it's not, yeah. So it's actually a pretty good deal. All right, so, yeah, we'll look at this for a December meeting. And I just want to mention, we did get a recognition for, from the Connecticut Coastal Conservation District for our continued assistance, I think we always help out, conserve our resources. So we got a certificate of appreciation from that for the activities and support Berlin has contributed to the Connecticut River Coastal Conservation District in twenty twenty-one fiscal year. So, you know, always looking to help our, conserve our resources in town and in the state. Okay, so no more committee reports, council communications? Yes, yes sir.
Unfortunately, this is the part I, council communications I don't like. We lost another town father, I guess, for want of a better term. Joe Bear Nanziato was, was an officer, police officer in town for thirty-two years, I believe. Who was also president of the school board and president of the, or chairman of the police commission. But more than that, he was, he was a Berlin, born and bred, graduated Berlin High. He gave back to his community. I remember he was my football coach when he came back and volunteered at the football at the high school. So I just didn't want his passing to go unnoticed. I know Kate does a good job of that, this will be part of our record and just wanted to send condolences to him. And also thank the mayor and town manager for the comments on the, I guess it was the website.
Yes, yeah, we put it out to the town and, you know, out to the public as well throughout. Yeah, another, you know, man who obviously committed to town as far as a police officer, but also as a volunteer for all the years, so, yeah, it's another sad loss, but he, you know, had a good life and did some great things, so.
I'll extend it to Kristy who, in, not a big, who prepared an announcement. Kristy Solomon. For the announcement, I've seen a lot of work, so I hope to take all the credit.
Oh, yeah, we give Krista credit, yeah, oh, yeah, she's the backbone of the town manager. Any other concerns, anything else? Anything, do we? Okay, close that and we'll go ahead and just put a motion for our November tenth meeting.
So.
Thank you. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and motion to adjourn?
Have a nice holiday.
All right, so move, so, have a good Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Same to you, stay safe, please.
Take care.
Stay up. Stay safe.
I want that, Mr. Man.